All good. Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting the Buckfield Select Board to Order for June 25th, 2025 at 6:34 PM. Old business done. New business, I would hope that we could, if anybody has a mind, I'd like to move the bids up at the beginning because we have folks here. Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we move the Paris Hill Brock School Road paving RFP up to the beginning of the agenda.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Open them up, pass them around. Generally, what we do is open them, read out the amounts and then vote on it at the next meeting. Four bit.
Read them loud so I can write them down.
All right.
Should be one for each road.
Oh, I see. Sometimes they're not as easy to read as you might assume.
So we have a, we have a bid sheet to each one of them. You're going to get your final numbers. Right here. Right here.
That one, that one.
So just go by company. Read the company and then a little name, then the amount.
Right.
And then I'll write them down as you go.
So the first bit I'm picking up here is Spencer Group Paving LLC. For Brock School Road, it's $206,713.10. Harris Hill Road is $223,883.40. From Gendron Corporation. Brock School Road, $270,000. Harris Hill Road, $295,000. Like see that? Ike Industries. Brock School Road, $199,151.25. Harris Hill Road, $220,166.25. This one. Northeast Paving. There we go. So for Northeast Paving, Brock School Road, $224,930. Harris Hill Road, $235,090.
I'll email those numbers out to everybody that was on the list tomorrow too.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then you guys have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes. Yes.
Cameron, I imagine they all do, but will you go through them to make sure they all meet the submission requirements?
Yes, I'll scan everything too and send it off to you guys so you have the week to look at it as well.
I appreciate it. And then we talked about, or you talked about contingency plans for if for some reason something doesn't get done.
Yep, it's in the contract.
So that's in here, okay.
Or it's in the bid.
Okay.
The proposal, so if you look at the last page. After the contract we have there. The last three paragraphs address those are the last, second to last.
In there.
In your packet. I included the whole bid proposal in there.
Okay.
So the second to last paragraph. As well as the completion date.
Pass those back to me. We have a special folder here when you're done. Then Cam's going to scan those out to us for further review.
So I'll scan, I'll scan those in and then I'll, I'll send you guys the sheet with the numbers. And once I scan everything down, I'll take a deeper look at them and then I'll share it with them too so that they can break it down. Tomorrow will just be the initial numbers just because it'll take me a while to go through all of that. The sheet I just filled out, if you can read my handwriting. You can tell I've lived my life typing on a computer and not writing on a piece of paper. Thank you, guys.
You.
Thank you. Please don't go back in here.
Yes.
I don't think, can I get it in front of the?
Thank you.
Ah, it's backwards. It's out to you. Good news is people can follow it if they want to.
Yeah, that's cool.
When I moved left, it went right. Trying to shade your head in the mirror.
Where am I? There we go. All right. Getting rose baves is very exciting stuff.
Mm-hmm.
All right. To the agenda. Consent agenda.
I move that we have heard the consent at John Doe.
One second, Pat.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Bye-bye.
Is there a eye?
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
And the total on that's $310,959.36. Approval of the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 Select Board Meeting. I was not here for that one.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
One second, though.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
And all of state. All right. Make 24, 25 social services requests.
I've emailed all these out to you guys. These are all the requests that we got for the under 425 fiscal year. Since this is your last meeting. I'd like to get them taken care of, so there's $30,250 in that line. So let me double check that just to verify. I'm almost positive that's the number, but I don't want to go through this and then have you guys have the wrong information.
I did not. I did not add up all the requests.
The requests are always more than what, what we budget for. So usually the Social Services Committee would go through these and make recommendations to the board and bring them to you. Unfortunately, there's nobody on the Social Services Committee right now, so that's why I brought it to you guys. Field trio. Which we'll talk about vacancies later on in the meeting too because I compiled that list. $3,250. To give you an idea. I don't have it right in front of me. I'd have to go back in the minutes. Our CAM. Our CAM is one that the Social Services Committee typically makes an appropriation to. There's a letter in there that breaks down the services that they've offered to residents of Buckfield. I'm just trying to get everything laid up so I can look at them all. Art here. So there's our CAM. Seniors Plus, that's another big one. Meals on Wheels. That they usually make a recommendation to appropriate to. You've got Community Concepts. Helping Hearts is a new one. And I think they're a newer nonprofit. But if you look at the Community Concept Sheets, they break that down town specific, what they've, what they've done for the community. Our CAM breaks it downtown specific and shows you what they've, the town's total services. One thing you'll note about our CAM is the town allocation for 23 says none. We actually did make an appropriation. It was in like the midst of the year and she didn't see it, so we did make an appropriation to them last year. I don't recall the amount off the top of my head. Seniors Plus has a good breakdown. 720 Meals on Wheels were delivered to five residents for a value of 7,200. Seniors Plus request was 1,000. Our CAM's request.
1,500.
Yeah, 1,500. Community Concepts was 1,450. So as you can see, usually they shrink down that amount and, and spread it out differently. So I know this is something that you all aren't used to having to do because usually you have a recommendation in front of you. Lake Stewards of Maine, I think, was one that was, they made an appropriation to last year. Lifelight of Maine was another one they made an appropriation to last year. And then Andwell used to be, I think, Andrew Scoggan.
Yep, hospice.
Hospice.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good service.
And then the
All of these nonprofits?
I believe so.
I believe so. Lifelight's a nonprofit. Andwell's. They're a nonprofit. Helping Hearts, I know, is a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Community Concepts, Seniors Plus, our CAM, the Cancer Resource Center. They are. I believe last year they contributed $250.
So eight total requests, was that sound right?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight, yes. Well, nine. There's Safe Voices too.
Oh, Safe Voices.
They had sent us a letter in the mail and we didn't receive it, so I photocopied. She had followed up in March asking if we had received it. They were asking for $500. I photocopied one of their flyers that we have. They have a, their focus is ending domestic violence. So there should be nine total, I believe. If you give me a second, I could probably pull up what last year's were.
I don't think we went even across the board last year, but if we did that this year and just gave each request an equal amount of money, it would be around $360 per service. Or we could do it more carefully. It's tough because I have no doubt that each of these services like provides really useful support to our community members.
Is there a way to measure the number of residents who receive support or services from these?
Some of them tell you how many. Some of them just give you a ballpark number. So last year I we'd taken off the Gary Owens house. I can't remember what you would put that on.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember what we did.
So Lake Stewart, that was the only one we changed. The Lake Stewards was 250, Seniors Plus was 600. This year I didn't get one from Maine Public. Lifelight was 500. Cancer Center of Maine was 200. Safe Voices was 100, our CAM was 1,000. And then Sexual Assault Response Services was 200, which I don't have one from them this year, so that kind of gives you, and actually a tough one though. Of course, you probably can't see it. You see it a little bit better, so. And then the bottom one had been taken off because it wasn't a local. It wasn't benefiting necessarily local residents.
So the Gary Owens house is not something that's
No, they didn't send the requests here. That was a veterans homeless thing, but they were like
They were kind of far away.
Across the state or something.
So that's one, two, three, NPR.
There's not in here.
Not in here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So what's in here that's not on that list?
Andwell and
Helping Heart. And it's just a different domestic
Well, Safe Voices was in there last year.
My best mistake.
There was, there was two different nonprofits in there last year that do similar stuff.
Gotcha.
I did not receive one from that other one. If it helps, I can open up the spreadsheet, type in all the names and we can go through it that way.
Yeah, I think that might help if we have a app.
Put the wrong name. Written this arcane. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Who am I missing? James Paul. And the so for this.
I want to look up how many the lakes of Maine dot org. Many of our lakes, do they monitor? Do you know how many lakes?
I am not a player.
They monitor.
Build or Oxford County. They don't have any lakes.
So Lake Stewards of Maine. They're having a meeting in the room next door and
I'm not sure if that was a knock or what.
Yeah.
So for bodies of water in Buckfield, we have South Pond.
Yeah, north and south pond and the river. I think that's it, isn't it? North on in Buckfield. Which one?
Jersey Bog, Mud Pond, North Pond, South Pond. We've got a nice little search feature on there. They should probably hear this. You're running out of blink. Okay. Hold on one second.
So those are
There you go.
So they monitor North Pond and South Pond.
It's listed on their website. I don't know it specifically. We've got data sources there. Looks like they pull their information from a lot of different places.
This research and information is very important, but do they, does this group physically contribute to our waterways, to our town?
Right, the information I have is what's provided in the letter that I gave you.
I have to assume they did something because the committee gave them money last year.
It does say, it says view existing monitors on specific lakes, please visit our lake resource website, which is this one. Search town, select the lake, then click on monitoring in the menu bar to see who's monitoring your lakes. N A, N A, N A, that's South Pond. Got Williams. So North Pond, which I'm assuming that has something to do with the water district too. It looks like North Pond. North Pond.
Thank you.
Social Services request because we don't have the Social Services Committee right now. You probably, he probably knows about that one. Lake Stewards of Maine.
Okay, yeah. Exactly, who's that?
Did it?
Did they have a specific?
They don't have a specific amount. We did 250 last year.
Well, we're in TV sometimes. But mine, that era and all of them. They had ended being around to do, because they know oil, do this, but they do.
Yeah, they only do it for North Pond. They don't do it for any other.
That's the only
We take care of. Oh, fine, we, they, they want to get out.
But I'm, well, I'm just saying, we just looked it up and that's the only body of water in Buckfield that
That they have a monitoring report on.
That they monitor.
Do we want to take the time to deliberate this tonight or do we want to
Well, you have
Have a conversation.
Yeah, kind of have.
Five days to spend it or it's gone, so that's why I brought it to this meeting.
Sure, sure.
Well said.
I mean, you can make a recommendation. We can go through this, figure out where it is and then pick it away from there.
Yeah.
But if we put in the numbers that we used last year. See where we're at.
No committee. There's no committee to
Yes.
Seniors Plus, Community Concepts, Andwell, Safe Voices, Lifelight, Cancer Resource, our CAM, Helping Hands.
Our CAM, yeah. The money, but the money is likely it for usually accurate. Our, our, they would maybe people who have or should there. Would have all through the part, so
All right, so last year.
It was always good. And their permanent here, they lost most of and all that. And state class committee. And like this.
3250. So last year, those were the appropriations. These other ones that don't have one didn't receive anything last year.
What's the total on that?
2650.
So I say, so I have a blank beside Community Concepts?
Yeah, apparently we didn't make an appropriation last year. Is that easier to see?
Thank you.
Can you see it?
So we have $600.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Instead of us having to keep adding it up.
Pretty wizard. Um. What's it look like if we give 700 apiece to our CAM and Community Concepts?
Yeah, they've sent us requests the last two or three years.
That's one of those.
Right, right, yeah.
It's getting fifty-five and well, sure, definitely not where they're expanding. I mean, I remember. Yes. And your first man. He is what? It's got on my. I don't judge you all. Clear.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
The biggest question is, how? Where can we put this money that will best serve our community?
I do agree with, I feel like five hundred was a very generous donation for us to give Lifeflight last year and like Glenn mentioned, like their budget is. That's not. All too much. I would, I would feel comfortable reducing that appropriation and focusing that towards some of the smaller. At least more impactful.
No. Everybody gets a bill.
I don't mind doing some for Helping Hearts, but I am under the impression they kind of are, you know, the stuff they get in there is like a lot of donations. They're basically like a local goodwill and mostly volunteer based, so.
We have our swap shop.
Yeah, so not, yeah, yeah, basically a swap shop, but. A little more organized.
I mean, the, these three right here. Do contribute. To the town.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this is a good organization. I just don't know. They didn't break down anything specific.
Well, and they're, they're, they are a humongous organization.
It's been.
So it's like. These, these two are very similar.
Yeah, yeah. Can we see the appropriation taken off of Lifeflight? Maybe like. Two hundred to Helping Hearts. Okay, two. We increase seniors loss by a hundred. We increase Safe Voices to three hundred.
What did I say the budget was? Thirty-two fifty?
We got two hundred bucks to spare here. The Glenn Holmes Foundation. Um. That's, uh. I don't know, uh, extra a hundred to Helping Hearts and Lake Stewart's, I guess. Thank you, thank you. Feel like the Monopoly Man right now.
Oh, look at that.
What do we think so?
Yeah, looks good.
I will make the motion to approve the outlined social services budget for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Zilia I.
Peter Rye.
Sandra I.
Glenn also. You made the motion. Zilia.
I made the motion.
I second. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, authorize the town manager to sign contracts, contract for the rescue service in Sumner.
Copies of those are in your packet.
Yeah, and they were.
They've been signed by the. Corresponding towns.
Right, and those.
Any big variances from years past or pretty much?
Increases, increases.
They were setting.
No, we, we increased them.
What if I start with a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the contracts? For rescue and fire services in Sumner and Hartford?
I will second that motion.
Further discussion?
So, yeah. The, the town, when I got here was like, the increases for, were very, very minimal. We work with Turner and Canton in the corresponding towns. Um, so Hartford involves obviously three different departments, whereas Sumner for rescue is just us. So Sumner saw a bigger increase in Hartford because we were aligning. The three towns in agreement on those, but they, they all were increases either way.
Yeah.
Um, Sumner went up considerably just because we get a lot of calls to Sumner. And when we're in Sumner, we're not in Buckfield, so. Those increases are reflected in, it's a three-year contract, which signing that is approved by the voters at town meeting. Let me get to it. All right, let's start at the top. So Sumner's goes up five dollars per capita for the next three years. Thirty dollars per capita this year, thirty-five next year, forty dollars the year after that, and we'll continue that pace till we get to where. We feel we should be.
Okay.
Fire for Hartford. They're at a hundred and one thirty-five per capita for fire. We cover a very small, I say small, when you talk about residents, we cover roughly just under three hundred residents. Um, so that's thirty thousand dollars for next year, thirty-one following thirty-two the year after that, which will get them up to a hundred and eight eleven per capita. And then rescue's a little bit more. It's just, just about four oh one. So as you can see here, we were at, when I took over, I think we were at fifteen dollars per capita for Hartford. Um, by the end of this contract, we'll be up to twenty-six, and then the subsequent contract will. Readjust according.
Yes, Sandra.
Are you comfortable with this pace of increase that it will get us to where we need to be? In the. Time that we need to get there.
Well, I, I would always like to see more, but what, what I think that. I wrote the contract, so. So, I mean, we've been discussing this since the beginning of this year.
Yeah.
With all three towns. Obviously Hartford's gone through some changes and. I had spoken to, uh, one of the selectmen from Sumner prior to sending them the contract and they, they kind of. Impedant a little bit, but I, you know, I explained what we're up against in Buckfield and, and. They signed it, so. They know that the increases are coming. And there's not a whole lot of other options for them. Uh, but I don't want to put them in a position where. I feel this is more aggressive than what was been done in the six years prior. So the fact that they were willing to at least sign them is a positive move forward.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, Bob I?
Zilia I.
Peter Rye.
Sandra I.
CEO LPI resignation.
I included that in your package too, but I have seventy pages. I'm trying to scroll through here, so. Um, so. I believe I'd given most of you a heads up that Kingston had, I mean, about a year ago, he had given me kind of a, I have too many towns. And now he's decided to go back to the army, so his last day with us will be. Will be the twenty-fourth of next month. So I. I have a. Plan. Um, I spoke to Manny's actually interested in, in doing the CEO certification as well and just still rolling it. They kind of correspond with each other, especially with building permits and assessing and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, obviously the assessing role, as we've gotten through the revaluation and everything. The requirements for him are less, they're not as, as frequent and as many hours, so. And it's, it still wouldn't be a full-time position, which is good, but it'll, it would allow us to, uh, have somebody in the office at least on a regular weekly basis. To handle all that stuff, so. He seems pretty certain about it. I was gonna go ahead and post everything, but, um. He was in the office watching recorded trainings and he was all about it, so as of right now, um, I've reached out to Kingston. He's gonna meet with Manny to discuss, answer any questions he has about the position.
Yeah.
Which we also have a good resource, because I know somebody else who used to be a code enforcement officer. Um, so I, I think we'll be okay. The LPI portion of it, I'll just have to find one that can. Fill in for a little while until, because there's no, like Manny can start as a code enforcement officer without being certified and he's got a twelve-month grace period to get that, the certifications that he needs.
Yeah.
Um, which Buckfield's not as extensive as some other towns. But the LPI doesn't have a grace period, so he would have to be certified before he could be appointed. So I'll have to do a little digging on the LPI side of it, but. Thirty days and counting, I guess. So. I just wanted to make everybody aware. I appoint the code enforcement officer, don't I? Yeah, so you don't have to make a motion on this.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah.
I haven't had to appoint a code enforcement officer, because Kingston's been with us since. Twenty twenty, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything he's done for us and wish him well.
Yeah.
I did a little work with Kingston and he's really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you have a plan.
Did you check your email today?
Uh, I do.
And I think you might work with him one more time.
Okay.
And Manny too.
Yeah.
All right.
Does Manny anticipate going for the LPI or is that?
Yes, he's just, so the legal issues is, is you need to have that for both LPI and code enforcement, right? And then he has to do the, the plumbing specific stuff before he can be certified, so.
But good to know he is interested in taking that on as well. Thank you, Kingston.
Guess he loves testing.
Yeah.
See you soon, Kingston.
Lots of what? You may need it.
Board and committee opening.
So it's been a while since I provided the public with an updated list. I know it's on the website, but not a lot of people are going page to page and looking at all the. Committee openings, so I did a breakdown. Um, it's on the packet on our website, but, uh. We've hammered on this one, the appeals board. Technically have one current member that expires on the thirtieth, and that leaves four open seats, so after the thirtieth, if they don't reapply, we have zero. That is a committee, I mean, a board that we really should have at least three members on. So if anybody's interested in that, that'd be great. Beautification committee, we've got one. That one expires in five days, four open seats. Budget committee has zero, five open seats. Community events committee's pretty good right now. They've got six with three open seats. Economic development committee hasn't really done anything in the last three years since COVID. There's two current members. They're both expiring at the end of this month, so there's three open seats, soon to be five. Library committee has one open seat. There's two that expire, but I anticipate that they're gonna reapply. I sent out letters to everybody that was nearing it. And then we have one open seat due to a resignation because they moved out of town. Old Church on the Hill Committee, obviously that's discussion that the board has to have soon regarding the warrant article that passed, but there's four current members, two are expiring at the end of this month with five open seats. Ordinance Development Committee, zero members, five open seats. The Planning Board, we currently have full minus the alternate, but all their terms expire at the end of this month. So we're about to not have a planning board. We don't have a Board of Appeals. Rec Committee has four members, two are expiring at the end of this month, one being me. I will continue to help, but I'm not doing it anymore, so there's three open seats soon to be five. Rogue Committee, um, got two expiring at the end of this month. Two open seats currently, soon to be four. Social Services Committee, zero, seven openings. And then they have the ad hoc committee, but they've got pretty good membership or pretty good, um, participation from all four towns right now. Their next meeting's tomorrow here, six thirty. So that's where we're at. We need. We need a lot of committee and board members.
Need bodies and chairs.
It, I'm, the one I'm concerned about right now honestly is, is the planning board, because in the last. Six months, the number of subdivision applications that have come in, and we're about to lose code enforcement too, which is a resource for them, so. Without them. How, we've, we've got to have a planning board.
We can't do that one.
No, and the planning board was reestablished through ordinance, so you have to have a planning board. So. That's where we're at. I don't know what more to say other than we need people.
Yeah, and if anybody has any ideas on. You know. What might help get people on those boards, I mean, please let us know.
So, I mean, as far as the planning board goes, and this isn't a recommendation from me, but. You, you could have a town vote to get rid of the planning board, but then you become the planning board. No, I mean, I see what the planning board has to go through, site visits, public hearings. It's a lot of work. And I just. I think having a planning board is, is the, what this town needs. We just need the number, we need people to. Step up and be willing to do it.
Yes, Glenn?
So there is. One of the possibilities, you, for to hire somebody or pay someone as a code enforcement officer that they, that they act. Work, a professional code partner, to be able to do both of all the work that you need. And at that point, you could reveal, you could be, you know, literally be, you're trying to staff, and you literally direct the order, so that it would be staff crew. Ninety percent of the things happen through order, staff.
Yeah.
On the really big, you'll never.
So there's option three.
The, 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 then you get.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we've gotten, we've been fortunate enough with the Board of Appeals aspect that nobody's appealed any of the decisions from the code enforcement officer or the planning board, that we haven't needed it, but if something like that does happen.
Oh, yeah.
So this sheet is on the packet. If people want to open it up and review it. Obviously, planning board, you know, a lot of people, they're. The reason they don't want to get involved is because they don't know anything about it. I mean, MA offers classes, there's all kinds of resources out there that the town will fund for people to do it who are serious about it, so. We just need to know that you're interested. And hopefully you don't, and hopefully you don't get bombarded with five subdivisions at once.
All right, thank you. And we're gonna promote that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a post on Facebook again. I mean, we talk about this all the time. We've been talking about the old church, and talking about the planning board, we've been talking about the Board of Appeals. I just.
Force people to.
No, you can't, and I just don't know. What to do outside of that.
All right, noise concerns discussion. Yes, Sandra.
So I asked that this be put on the agenda. I don't remember specifically the meeting at which we. Had a preliminary discussion about a noise ordinance. You happen to remember.
It was a while ago. I think it was during the winter, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was during the winter.
So we began that discussion based on. Um, requests.
The numbers.
Concerns that we were receiving from, um. Community members about. Some noise ongoing in town. So I don't know if we should revisit. Looking at a noise ordinance, and then, um, there has been some concern. Raised about the level of noise. Raised about the level of noise. At an establishment here in town. I for one support business in Buckfield and want to see business do well here in Buckfield, but I think it also needs to. Be cognizant of. The needs and concerns of taxpayers and be willing to listen. To their concerns. Respectfully. So. I'm not sure where we should go from here. But. We need to come up with a plan anyway to at least. Hear what people have to say.
Yep.
And as I look at the, um. Current special amusement permit. And the way that it's written. I'm, I'm not sure if it allows for any further outdoor. Events. In the way that it's written. So I don't.
A permit for.
The, the special amusement permit for the bucket?
She brought that.
Yes. You know, this specific. Special amusement permit that was agreed to. In the way that it is. In the way that it is written. Because the dates that were listed, the last date was October twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And then there's. Line E. Um. That says between the hours of eleven AM to twelve fifteen AM, six times during the term of this permit. Providing at least seventy-two hour notice is given to the Buckfield Town Office. And then F. Is confined within the building on the premises. Where the business.
It's not expired. It expires when its liquor license expires. The specified days.
I think the intent was to then. So that would allow six more outdoors to be added.
Right.
To that. But. Some questions were asked of me by a community member, and that's fair.
Absolutely.
So when you. Look the way it's written. With the. Indoor. Line. But.
Do you have the, is the date that this was approved on that?
It was last. The, um. Application was May twenty first, twenty twenty four. I believe it was in, um. June eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
But I believe it goes until. Which is in August. I believe. And so. There's the six times during the term of this permit and twice. Um, the bucket is asked. So that would leave four times. But then it was brought up to me when you look at. That the live entertainment shall be permitted. And then it says confined within the building. Right, except for these outdoor events, which ended on October twenty twenty four.
No more than, no more than the one above it.
May be utilized on the following dates.
Pretty loud. I can't hear mine, but I would not want to live next to it.
On the outdoor event night.
Usually the bucket has, has submitted a new. Permit request. He hasn't, he, they haven't submitted a new one yet. Usually it never makes it to. The liquor license, so I don't. I don't know what their plan is.
My question is, do we want to move forward at all with looking at? Proposing or putting drafting a noise ordinance. To then put before the voters, because people did. Say, please do something.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. And then. The next step I think would be to specifically invite. Um. Community members, whether we want to do it at our next meeting or following meeting to say. You know, we're setting aside time. We want to hear your concerns, we will listen.
Right.
Um. If, if we need to, to find that middle ground, we want to support local business, particularly the local business that really gives back to the town. But, um. I also understand the number of events has increased and it. The hours have increased and, um. It's loud and, and vehicles and peeling out and the hooping and, and I get it.
Yes, Glenn?
If you have a, if I have a public hearing, say, what do y'all want to do? How would you think? I'm sorry, but enough of these people are informed of what cost of that request is. I'm not sure if this makes a whole lot of sense. Hey, what else do you want to hear? But I'm, but I'm pretty comfortable saying that costs would stagger. Because. Here you will not, do not. Unless we want to pay.
Well, I think there are two separate pieces here. The people who are at least reaching out. Emails, uh, um, are. People who live near the bucket.
Well, that's on, that's on ordinance.
Right, so there are two separate things. I think we need to have a discussion. Where we.
Permit process of say, yeah, you can't. You go, I'll handle that permit. Even then. I'm not trying to hurt them too bad, but if I own the place. We're not doing. Not part of the mother license. The only thing you have. Everything else is. Proctor's gonna get out there and go, you need to stop. No authority. Because unless you have any A. You know, to protect the money, the day connection. Through civil prosecution. Then you have none. Yeah, all those things, I'm just saying, so have these things in place, the community's got money. I think people should be informed of that as they're starting what they want.
Yeah.
You know, because the goal. I guess it would be TV. On a festival level. And you have to buy the equipment, measure that.
We have, we have the equipment to measure that.
When you buy that.
Through Oxford County, is it not?
Of the townhouse line. I know.
But we haven't, and we've had it for a while. Clearly, probably needs to be calibrated already. Probably every like ninety-eight person. I mean, I've been through this before with them. And it's just, uh, another dollars. Had a way back in the night about to.
So are you suggesting that a special amusement perp- permit? Has no purpose?
We do see Judy, just a second.
Yes.
But this is what I'm saying, that we need to let the community know that we want to hear what they have to say. Because. Folks have expressed.
But if you. If you have a public hearing.
I'm not saying public. I'm not suggesting we have a specific public hearing. But what I am suggesting is that we identify a select board meeting in which we will set aside time. And we are planning to listen to what people have to say.
Well, it makes sense to research it so that when the, you know, when they are here, we can present them with the facts and say. We hear you, and this is what we're up against. What do you want to see? So we have the back and forth.
Right, yeah.
Right. Judy was, yes Judy?
Oh, while you're discussing this, I mean, the, the, the sound from the bucket is relatively few times a year. Does anybody realize that we have a guy who sets off a little bomb at ten o'clock every night in this end of the town?
Yes, we do, yeah. I can hear it by us.
Yes, and that's, that does get addressed in the, in the drafted ordinance that Cam has in front of us.
Okay.
But yes, that I believe is one of the things that triggered this conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is certainly not the sole issue, right? There's other.
Plenty of other noises going on in this town.
Yes, Cam?
So I think when I, when I drafted this to give you, put something in front of you, I, I'd done it. Because of the number of complaints that I'd received from all over town about various different things. After it was drafted. The enforcement aspect of it was my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Because we already have, we already have ordinances in this town that we have no. We have no teeth, we have no enforcement, so it's. It's. Author's not gonna do us a favor and just come here and start writing several, several, you know, citations for things for local ordinances without. Something in return, and that in return is gonna be. Financial. Which, so that's, that's why I hadn't. Brought it back to you guys. Um, I think in regards to, a- and then even with the noise ordinance, I think in the draft it even specifies. Exemptions are those with a special amusement permit because that's a separate ordinance altogether.
Section four, letter D, individuals in possession of a valid special amusement permit issued by the Buckfield Select Board. In compliance with the town of Buckfield Special Amusement Ordinance on the date or dates listed in the valid permit.
So I, I think in regards to the noise with that business and specifically was, if you go back and look at some of the earlier permits, there were. Fewer days that they had those outdoor live events, and now it's kind of ballooned to. A lot. Maybe when we go through the process. The board should evaluate how many days should be allowed. And, and include that.
But in a lot of it, it doesn't necessarily. The noise, it's the duration, like it goes till midnight or one AM, right? A lot of them would be happy if it was ten, eleven.
Yeah, yeah. And I certainly don't.
But if they were next door to your home.
Right, yeah.
Up to sixteen times a summer.
Oh, I, I already had that problem.
But so, you know.
Right.
Yes, Neil?
Yeah, on that ordinance, is there a time, um, where the, you know, the loudness does not matter? So for example, if, if someone wants to, um. Target practice during the day. Is there, I mean, obviously you're not gonna do it at night, but does that ordinance say any time of day? Or is it just specifically once you get to a certain time at night or, you know, not earlier than a certain morning?
No, i- it does outline certain times, um, for example. Timber harvesting, construction activities, recreational vehicles are all ten. Uh, you know, no noy, excessive noise between ten PM. Uh, and six AM, I think is what that's supposed to mean. Um, but yeah, there are specific times outlined in the draft ordinance.
And Neil, this isn't a draft that we are proposing.
Yeah.
This was, here's some information, other towns. They do, we could put together, we as a community.
Yeah.
Could put together whatever we want. And if the community decides. We don't want to deal with the hassle of enforcement, then we don't do anything, but. There are enough people who are unhappy about noise situations. And who are coming to us, and I don't think that the right response is, oh, well.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that we need to. Have the discussions and let people make the choices. On how we.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we have some noise. And you, you don't have the target practice or the gunfire. Perhaps in. Some areas that you have in Buckfield. We encourage common sense and.
Yeah.
Good neighborly behavior, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, we want to be able to adequately balance like neighbor concerns with a flourishing local business. That, you know, enough people are drawn to where they're able to host these sorts of events, so. All an ongoing discussion we're willing to have and fine tune.
Set a date where we put this on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, uh, so. Next meeting is next week. You want to do it the one after, just.
The fifteenth?
Get the word out. It's okay with me if it's.
People are talking about it now.
Yeah.
So they have active concerns.
Yeah.
I mean, next meeting's fine with me too, either way.
Do we have?
Any one or.
Okay with me.
Might want to wait just a little. On these people, right? You don't give them enough time to.
Yeah, true, since it's just in now less than a week.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
So the meeting after next?
The fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, sir.
The. Question.
Of course.
This meeting. Would it be beneficial? If I don't know where all these. They have something from other places. People go, it's winter. So this one, I just thought that. You know, people could. Was it certain, but we have no answer to those suggestions. Some sort of a proposal or some ideas for those.
Yeah, yeah, so Cam had a, um, a bunch of those for us and we had to consolidate it into something. But. It didn't really move forward because the enforcement end of that is. Yeah, difficult.
I understand that.
Yeah. But what we do.
I think on what you read, the enforcement. I, I believe Turner identifies enforcement. Within the, um. Administrative staff. Of Turner, so it isn't law enforcement that's. I. I'm not sure on that, but. You have different. Alternatives for how.
Sure, yeah.
Things should be enforced. Things should be enforced. No, very good idea.
It's all, it's all real.
No, no.
Really good idea to say, okay, force. But there has to be an. It has to be reasonable. Can't just say. Amish, Oxford, some sheriffs come in here. Other than that, nothing happened.
Yeah.
Let's really force. Say all you want, enforce it, before you say how it is. Make sure it, um, order to it.
Yeah. All right, we'll plan on getting some. Information together for that meeting that we can get out. That works for everybody. Yep.
So we would encourage people to come, whether their concerns are repeated explosions. In some areas of town or.
Gunfire.
Individuals or gunfire or.
Yeah, come ten o'clock. If I don't hear it, I want to go check on him.
He's down.
All right, thank you. All right, other business?
Um, I would like to make a motion to schedule a workshop preceding the select board meeting on the fifteenth. For the purpose of discussing our transfer station swap shop and the current rules. Can I have a second?
What date?
The fifteenth.
Oh.
And we'll, for our meeting is at six thirty, so I'd say, I guess, five thirty, the workshop.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'm under the impression that we wouldn't need a quorum for it, so anyone who would want to show up is welcome, but I also feel comfortable. You know, kind of setting it up and organizing it. But just for the purposes, they have some, you know, their current list of rules that. Uh, the volunteers think just needs some fine tuning, so just getting an official forum to have that discussion and. And then moving into perhaps approving it. In a future select board meeting.
So you've been solid with.
Does this body? Have the authority to make those decisions, or is it a solid waste committee? That has to make those.
That's true, yes. It would have to be the solid waste committee voting on the change to the solid, uh, to the swap shop rules.
And as you talk about swap shop, I know that. A request went out, some support.
Yeah.
As the Conex box, at least one of them stands right now. The holes, the leaks and the potential mold issues. Make it unusable. And so I know that the request went out. That somebody with some professional.
Yeah.
Experience come in and give some guidance to the volunteers of the swap shop, right? They're ready to do the work.
Yeah, the, the swap shop needs help identifying, um, next steps for some specific issues. Let me pull up the email I sent out. Yeah, the swap shop is currently looking for someone, uh, pretty with like construction knowledge and can, and repair work to stop by. They're, they have some points of concern in one of the Conex boxes. Uh, there is a leak that they need to patch. It's, they're worried about mold on the floor and mitigating that. Um, I believe they had an issue with an outlet. It sounded like in their last email, they were able to repair that themselves. They, just some stability issues where the backside of the first Conex is starting to sink into the sand. Um, okay, thank you, Cam. So that's good for now. And just generally sealing the Conex to prevent these issues in the future. So if there's anyone in the community. I can make like a little infographic for it too, to post on social media, but if there's anyone here listening in the community who has. Experience with this kind of work. And could just even, you know, not even necessarily help, although that would be much appreciated to, you know, stick around for some muscle, but also just pointing them in the right direction. Identifying which issues, you know, need to be repaired, how they can go about that, which ones maybe are, you know, in ongoing mitigation. That sort of thing. So please reach out, uh, either to me, AZA, LEA, COR, M I E R. At townofbuckfield.org. Or our current swap shop coordinator's, uh, lead is Sarah Nickel. Um, and her email. Is MMA dot S N I C K E L at gmail dot com. She would be the point of contact for the swap shop. You can go through me, her, both of us. But we really need someone with a little more repair and construction experience than either one of us have, so much appreciated. But yeah, the, the, uh, in the meantime, the current rules, they just want to do some light tweaking too. And Sarah was asking me to schedule a workshop for that, and that was a date that we agreed.
We'll have some people here for both. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to get info out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? The motion was to have the workshop. On the fifteenth at five thirty.
Yeah, that.
All right, all those in favor? Bye bye.
Azalea, hi.
Your honor.
Sandra, I.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Azalea.
Other, other business? No? Neil? How's things?
Oh, pretty good. The, um. We submitted the, um, request to do the ED two seventy-nine. For the state, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. We're hoping for another, another couple of weeks, um, we'll get it back. Uh, and we're going to be talking tomorrow night. That's our meeting, um, at the town office right there at six thirty. Possibly of going ahead and doing the petitions for each town.
Fantastic. I, I believe the, the school budget passed by thirty-six votes. Is that correct?
Correct.
In these three towns?
Nope.
Well, there's that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. We appreciate you on that committee. It's, uh, kind of the talk of the town at the moment, I think.
The work you folks is, are doing is invaluable.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a lot to it, and we have members on the, uh, on the board who are either members of, um. Uh, for example, of Derigo, we, we have a principal from Derigo who is on the board, uh, who lives in Buckfield. We also have someone that, um, is, uh, was part of the transportation and the director of transportation, um. As, as sometime in the past, so we have a lot of knowledge that, that goes along with that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Any other, other business?
Like a quick other, other, we don't have to discuss it, but something that's been on our parking lot for a long time is, um, self-evaluation.
I did draft one, um, if, oh, and you've drafted one. I made.
Okay.
Sorry, you asked me to last meeting, so I did.
Okay.
But we could use yours too, either one.
So this was just something, this would be like an individual.
There you go.
You're good.
I just. So for me, when I think of an evaluative tool, I think of something that can be measured. Not I try hard or I am good at, but to demonstrate how often or to what frequency, so. That's how these things are worded and measurement, but I am in no way. I, it was just a starting point.
I think it's great.
Did you share?
I did not. I was gonna, I was gonna send it out after this meeting for us to review before the first one. Also, like, look at it and kind of compare, and if there's any I feel like. To go on here, but I think this looks great too.
So if you want to put that out there and then we can look at it and talk about it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then I was asking. Bob, Cameron, maybe you know, um. Do evaluative tools need to be public record?
See now, like your evaluation, I believe, is an HR thing, right?
That's right. Mine's a personnel thing. If it's, if it's individualized. No, if it's about the board as a whole, maybe. That I would want to ask for. A legal opinion on.
But if, if we were doing.
Like on you specifically as a board member? Or it'd be as a whole as a board?
If, if we each did individual. Self-assessment.
I would think that that fall, even though you're elected officials, I would think that that falls under personnel.
Yeah.
I, I'd want to ask.
Yeah.
Legal.
Okay.
Before I gave you an answer, because I don't want to give you the wrong information.
All right, I'm not now.
And I can do that if you would like me to.
I, yes, please. And I'm not necessarily thinking. We could collect the data all together and then.
Yes.
Share that to show growth.
Yeah, sum it up.
But as, as an individual. Take a long, hard look at what I'm really good at and what I'm not really good at. Each one of us.
Yeah.
Do that. It's maybe easier to, um.
Right, because I always want to get better about checking my email, for instance. And I.
Yeah.
I always fall short.
No, I think this is great.
So please to start, and then maybe we talk about it next time.
Cool.
Thank you for bringing that together.
Thank you for Azalea. And fantasy then.
Oh, no.
Paper version.
I don't know. I'm looking at mine. I'm like, wow, I was kind of overthinking it. So I think this one's great, but yeah, we'll compare.
Okay. Maybe combine.
Yeah, yeah.
Public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on.
This is just informative. Um, so remember all the fun we had, uh, last year? Updating our building permit ordinance?
Yes, yes.
So Governor Mills signed. A bill into law that. Will require us to. Rewrite our building permit ordinance again. But we have till twenty twenty seven, so I'm just putting that. I'm here reading out that, the statute has changed yet again, and, um, there. The exact. Statement. From, I was trying to give back. So I get the updates from MMA, from the legislative. Section of MMA or whatever, and Kate before is really great about updating on things that affect our communities, and. Basically, it's taking more. Home rule authority away from. Local municipalities, you know, telling you how many structures you have to allow on a buildable lot, you know, it, before it was. You know, we could have a building lot, you had one structure per whatever our acreage was, forty thousand square feet, and that was that. Then we get the ADUs. Now they have to allow, I think. Three? Two or three, depending on where it falls. Uh, and then in addition to that. Our shoreline, I mean, our shoreline, our subdivision regulations need to be updated because the change now is. That you buy a structure and convert it into apartments. Before you did one, you did two. Once you hit three. You had to go for subdivision approval. Well, now it's after the fourth one. If I understand this correctly, I skimmed through it real quick, but so. We now have, the planning board's gonna, the planning board is gonna have to. Review and revise that regulation, and we're also going to have to redraft our building permit ordinance to comply with all of this. I don't know how much it's going to impact it. I'll work with AvCog and try and get some insight, but. Just letting you know what the state government's doing to us.
So we anticipate having to host a workshop, public hearing?
No, probably what will happen, especially in the building permit ordinance, is I'll work with AvCog, because they, they typically do like model ordinances. And then usually when something like this happens, they have a template or, you know, an insert that goes into it.
Yeah.
But the whole thing is kind of a pain, because then a town meeting, you have to. Vote to pass the ordinance, and then if it doesn't pass. It's kind of like, what does it matter? The state says we have to do X, so.
Yeah.
But you still have to go through the process of getting it approved, so. We did it last year. It went off without a hitch, but, you know, it's a lot of work to update an ordinance and have to change it again, and then who knows, next year the. Legislature might change it again, and then we have to do it all over again. It's just, it's frustrating. It's a lot of the little things that people don't see. That we have to deal with, so.
Thank you.
Now you can go to public comment if you're like.
All right, public comment. Go public comment.
Hi, Judy.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at, uh, seven fifty-nine PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your wonderful input.
Yes, sir.
Always good to have a plan. Whether it comes to fruition or not.